Okay, we are now in open work session as Wycomico County Council, September, still September 5th, 2017. First item on the agenda is the discussion reference to fire service in Wycomico County. Mr. Strasburg, I know you had said you would like to begin with some opening statements.
Yes, if I could. Just before we start to get into, into the details and any questions the council may have, I, I just wanted to go back and talk a little bit about the history of the fire service agreement. The fire service agreement is not a county fire service agreement. The fire service agreement is and always has been a two-party agreement between the city of Salisbury and Wycomico County, and it lays out how the city will be reimbursed or paid for services that it provides into the unincorporated areas of the county. So it is strictly a funding agreement. It's the city saying, "We want this amount of money," and the county agreeing to pay that amount of money. To take you back in time, you may recall the, the public dust-up, if you will, that I had with Mayor Dan Jimm-Orton. Jim demanding that the city was being paid at the time, I believe $965,000 a year, and Jim saying that the city was due a minimum of another $2 million to $2.5 million. When I came to you with this fire service agreement and said it was a good deal, I meant that. It's a good deal because we're paying $950,000, not $3.5 million. So financially, it is a good deal, and it's a two-party agreement between the city and the county, paying the city and the county for services that the city provides into unincorporated areas. We didn't create any fire service maps. Fire service map that was attached to that agreement was the fire service map and the EMS map that occurred that was in existence at the time. We didn't change any map. My staff nor anybody in those meetings changed the map. There were discussions, and there certainly were discussions about, at that time, you recall, the Fire Station One volunteers and the city's disagreement was reaching a head. There was discussion about creating a, a fire service district out of the Station One District for the volunteer company.
Right.
And it was from the bypass, included the bypass, east extending out the rest of, of Station One's territory. So that, so that was discussed. At the time, when the ser, when, when the agreement was executed, the whole Station One volunteers, city disagreement had not yet been resolved. So we embedded in the agreement, the section of the agreement, and I can have Paul go through that with you, that, that, that if, if there was a change in the territory, that it would be agreed upon by the city, the county, and the Fire Chiefs Association. The reason we put that in there, a couple of reasons. Number one, it would have financial implications for the city because if we reduced their territory, we had migrated in the service agreement to a pay per call formula because we felt that that was the most discreet way of funding fire and EMS service. On the other hand, the Chiefs Association would have to weigh in on if we were changing an, and existing territory, the companies, the volunteer companies that may have bordered those territories, 1, 2, or 16, should certainly be consulted about what impact that may have on their companies. So that's the reason that we embedded that language in the fire service agreement, and from there, whatever questions you may have, I'll, I'll be glad to answer them the best I can. But, but I, after hearing the comments, I wanted just to go back in time and remind everybody about where we were at the point in time that this agreement was executed. I also want to remind you that the, that the fire service agreement with the city at that point in time had, had been expired for several years, and there was a lot of contention, a lot of disagreement, a lot of threats, including the nuclear option, and there, there was a considerable amount of pressure to bring this to, to closure, both on the county side and I believe also on the city's side.
Thank you.
So, you know, with that, I'm happy to answer any, any questions I can possibly answer for you.
Thank you, Wayne. Councilman Kilmer?
All right, I guess I'll start first. Okay. I appreciate what you say, Wayne, and that, that, you know, was consistent with my recollection that this Station One territory, as it existed, as it has existed for the longest, you know, as long as anybody can remember, remains intact in the fire service agreement.
Yes.
And that can only be changed through city, county, fire chiefs.
Yes.
So essentially, five different bodies, you know, the city council, you know, I mean, it has to go through the city council, mayor...
The executive legislative.
Yeah, and then the fire chiefs.
Correct, correct.
So, the city rejected that, so that means that the territory's not divided. Is that correct?
The city will not accept, based on the city council's vote, the city council voted that they would not accept a reduction in the city's first call territory.
Okay. So, and after what the executive said, that he, so, can you clarify what the executive said and what's going to happen on September 15th? Is the territory divided as of September 15th unilaterally by the county?
No.
Or is it, okay, so let's, let's...
No, no, there was a media, and again, there was a media report that quite frankly was inaccurate. The media report indicated that the county executive had unilaterally assigned a territory to Station One, and on September 15th, calls would be, first calls would be dispatched to Station 13. That is absolutely untrue. It's inaccurate. That's not going to happen. What the executive did do is he instructed David Shipley and the EMS department to do whatever needs to be done for creating the dispatch routing, if you will, in the eventuality that Station 13 was awarded that territory.
Okay. So it's kind of like an emergency plan?
A letter from, that Bob sent to the council, "I authorized David Shipley to proceed with the necessary work to activate the fire station at Station 13." He's saying there, he's activating them.
He's activating, well...
That's what it means. This, this company will not be ready to come online and respond until September 15th, but much work has to be completed in order to make this happen.
Right.
That's what I interpret.
I mean...
It's right here. This company will not be ready to come online and respond to dispatch calls. So that's telling me that they're going to be dispatched on September 15th.
That's not what he intended.
That's, that's what...
There's a lot of unintended things happening. You know, you, you send out an email that says that Bob's dropping the support of Station 13.
No, I did not say that. I withdrew the endorsement for a work session.
Ah, that's not what...
You all know what an endorsement means.
It wasn't a work session scheduled.
Wasn't a work session scheduled, Wayne, and then he went to a, apparently he went to a far house meeting.
Hold on a second. I had, I had sent over an endorsement requesting a work session on Station 13.
That is correct.
And I sent over a, an email after the city vote saying, "I'm withdrawing that endorsement because the city has rejected..."
That is correct.
I think you said Bob's in, Bob isn't dropping the endorsement.
No, I, I, my email was very clear. Very clear.
I can find it here. I don't know if I can.
Somebody dig it up.
But apparently, at a far house meeting, Bob...
Dig it up anytime you want. I withdrew my endorsement.
That's okay, that's all right, that's all right. It's okay, we're all, we're all okay.
But anyway, apparently it was said at one of the far house meetings too, because I heard it through some of the far...
One said by me.
Said by Bob.
So what's, what's Dave Shipley doing?
Dave Shipley, it's not Dave, Dave, Dave and his people have, have, have done, I'm not even sure they're finished yet, to be perfectly honest with you, because the last time I talked to David, the end of last week, he still didn't have certain of the radio data that he needs in order, Larry, you probably understand this better than I do, he didn't have all the technical data that he needed in order to have it ready to send those dispatches if in fact it was decided that Station 13 would be awarded that territory.
Let's, let's look at this. Who's involved in mutual aid if that territory gets established in, in September 15th? What happens if these, if there's trouble making the call to this, to this district?
Mutual aid, mutual aid is worked out between the stations themselves, and mutual aid, again, when I had spoken to David, I can't remember if it was Thursday or Friday, all the mutual aid agreements had not yet been worked out. But, but the, the, the scenario that on September 15th, we were going to start dispatching Station 13, just simply is not accurate.
Mr. Cannon, could I, could I just...
You can understand why we have confusion.
Yeah, I'm reading from the letter, the June 29 letter that Mr. Culver wrote, and he's speaking in terms of Station 13. "This company will not be ready to come online and respond to dispatch calls until about September 15, 2017."
Right.
I mean, the implication is, come that date, they will be getting dispatch calls.
Right.
I assume that's first call.
Do you want to talk about the letter, or do you want to sit here and talk tonight about where we are in reality?
We'll probably talk about what we feel is important.
The executives spoke, the executives spoke about two and a half hours ago and made it very clear.
I don't think he did.
Well, I'm making it very clear.
I guess another question's going to be, where's this station going to be? We don't even know whether this station's going to be at the airport, whether it's going to be at Snow Hill Road.
It's not going to be at the airport.
Where, I mean, if, if it's being dispatched, where's the location?
It's not being dispatched.
If the instructions were to dispatch, hypothetically, I'll go with a hypothetical if you want to.
They're using the address, is Cory still here?
No.
It's 709 something, Snow Hill Road.
So it's 800. Originally it was 800. Somewhere in that area.
Yeah, it's where the cemetery's at.
So I guess the, the next question would really be getting down to the chase with Mr. Wilber. You have to be aware of these circumstances. What is your legal opinion as far as the pending litigation in our challenging the fire service agreement?
Well, we're not filing litigation about it.
I know we're not. No, I know, I understand that, but you, you understand the fact that the city has threatened litigation?
They've sent a letter saying that they may litigate about it.
Okay, well, well, I would only guess or hope that before any, any steps have been taken over the last few months, that legal advice was sought out, and I'm wondering as to, with the decisions that have been made, what legal advice were you suggesting that would guarantee that the county would be in a good position should any type of lawsuit be filed?
I think it ties right into what Wayne just said, that Station 13 is not going to be sent out on September 15th.
Mr. Wilber, can you speak into the mic?
Sure.
Well, I think the reason there's so much confusion is because you heard so many people here, I believe, thinking full well that this station was going to happen, and the only reason it wasn't going to happen is because this body here was preventing it from happening. So they've been given some impression that this is going to happen on September 15th. It didn't come from here.
Yeah. And I can only key off of what Wayne has just said, that it's not going to be a station which is going to be sent out as a first responder on September 15th. That's my understanding.
Can't be dispatched until there's a territory, and right now, there's not a territory.
Going back to your email, Wayne.
Yep.
It says, "Laura, as you know, the city council has rejected the creation of a fire EMS district for Station 13. That being the case, there is no need to pursue the matter further. The executive has therefore instructed me to cancel our endorsement regarding this matter. If you need formal retraction, please advise me." It doesn't say anything about canceling a work session, it just says canceling the endorsement. I mean, how would you take that?
Ask Laura, Laura knew exactly what I meant.
Okay, so, just for clarification, an endorsement memo is a memo from the county executive's office over to county council requesting a particular item to be added to the agenda, requesting a closed work session, a open work session, and when they say endorsement, he's referring to that particular memo asking for open work session.
Read the first two lines, if you can, Joe.
"As you know, the city council has rejected the creation of the fire EMS district for Station 13. That being the case, there is no need to pursue the matter any further."
Okay.
Okay, that's, that, I know it's saying, I know what you're saying, you know, I guess...
How many people we have sitting here?
How would I take it?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Are there any of you 10 people, I'm clear, what an endorsement from the executive office to the county council requesting a work session means, and what a withdrawal of that endorsement means?
Are you aware of the first two lines in your email and what it stated?
It's very clear, John. Don't play word games with me.
I don't really appreciate what you're insinuating to this council, and I don't really appreciate the fact that you're going to be talking in that tone of voice to this, to this government body.
I don't appreciate, I don't appreciate the intentional distortion of what was very clear to the county council administrator. I was withdrawing an endorsement for a work session at the next county council meeting because the city had just made a decision to reject consideration of awarding part of that territory.
Understood. All we're trying to do is to explain what created the confusion in the first two lines where it says the executive is no longer going to pursue this matter.
Could anyone seek clarification from me?
I thought it was pretty clear.
We took it face value. Let's move on.
All right, I've got a question.
Go ahead, Larry.
Thank you, Wayne, for being here, and, and thank you for that summary. This has got to be the most confusing mess that I've ever been in this last three years. It is so confusing, and I'm sorry that you're put on the spot because the person that needs to be sitting where you're sitting is not here, because if we needed the answers, it needs to come from the horse's mouth, because what we're reading here is specifically what we understand. The same thing with that letter right there. That's how we interpret it, and it's not to put conflict between you and the council. It's what we interpreted, whether we have to try to get clarification on every email, that's not going to happen. But I do apologize that you're put in that spot there, but Mr. Culver should be here because this has been so much flip-flopping back and forth that those poor guys from Station One have no idea what's going on, the career guys from Salisbury have no idea what's going on, they don't know what's going to happen July 1st, it didn't happen, now September 15th. This is so confusing. I don't think anybody out here understands what is being presented to us right now.
I think part of the misinformation too is that when Bob says that his hands are tied because of what the Fire Chiefs Association has, has stated, isn't really, isn't really, I don't think that's a very, I think that's somewhat disingenuous. His hands aren't tied, I think he knows his hands aren't tied. The government bodies that have signed the fire service agreement are the ones that dictate what does or doesn't happen in reference to this whole topic.
What's, what's the chance, is Paul, of changing the fire service agreement? City's got to agree.
Yeah. I, just, again, going by what I read in the paper, I think the city's position is clear.
Tonight, earlier, we had a work, a vote on this volleyball game issue, and I asked a question in that MOU, you know, it said right in there, it said, you know, "All parties have to agree to terminate this." And that just, you know, shows you how you can get into these things and, you know, can't get out, you know, so. So we're, we're stuck with it, right? There's no getting out of it.
This is the city-county agreement as we sit here.
And that was, Wayne says it was a good deal, we agreed with him.
This, further, the agreement specifically states that Salisbury Fire District may only be amended by agreement with the county, the city, and the Wycomico Chiefs. The, the confusion also with this is that we have two sets of signatures on there, but we don't have that third entity.
No, no, again, there is a specific section. The only section of the agreement that requires agreement of five parties is a change in territory. Other than that, the agreement stands on itself. It's an agreement between the county and the city. The signatories to the agreement are the county and the city. It's a funding agreement.
So what happens, let's say that the county, Bob, and the Fire Chiefs Association decided they are dead set on allowing Station 13 to respond, and Station, and Salisbury says no. Where do we go from there?
Court.
You'll end up in court.
The purpose of this, this meeting, I guess, really is to know what, what's happening after September 15th, what's going to happen. Let's say October 15th, what is going to happen? Somebody has to have planning here somewhere, there has to be a plan.
Until, until the city of Salisbury were to agree to a partitioning of Territory 1, it's just called Station 1 Territory, the agreement stipulates that that territory can't change. Whether or not the city would agree to that change for some reason, if there was some negotiation that would lead them to say, "Well, yeah, given this, we would agree to that." But the agreement stands on its, on its own legs. The agreement's very clear.
Understood. Well, if we were taking the time, and if the, the news and the media and the information being given to all the, the fire stations was the fact that the county is in the process of just continued discuss, discussions and negotiations with the city, then I would understand maybe some of what's happening, but that isn't what it is. What we're being told is that there's a dictate that has been given to Dave Shipley and his department to begin preparing the 911 center for a new station.
And there's also been promises made to the 13, you know, these guys come to me, they talk to me, "Hey, we've been told we're going, we're going to get it."
Yeah.
County executives out there telling them, "It serves, they're going to get it." County executives also going out there telling stories about Mr. Culver, Mr. Kilmer, and Mr. Dodd, I mean, Mr. Cannon.
I do the same thing.
You know, that they want to close the station down. I've got Farland telling me that stuff.
Close what station down?
Allen and Palaville.
I've never heard a word about that.
We've got the guys in the room, sitting right there, he told it to them.
Yeah, first time I heard that.
Sitting right there.
First time I heard that was tonight.
I've never heard anything.
They just told, they just told me that he sat at the table and said that. Now, you know, that doesn't build good relationships with a county council when a county executive's out saying things like that. And it doesn't build good relations when county executives out here promising people's things that can't be done, and then they come up here and blame us for not supporting them? So somebody's out there saying, "Oh, well, you know, we can't do it because of the county council," you know? That doesn't build good relationships, and then people wonder why we don't get along.
So the bottom line, for the next five years, we're stuck with this agreement unless the city agrees to change it.
That's it. Mr. Wilber?
Yeah, what that, what the agreement says is, if the reimbursement formula is talking about the money part of it, is financially untenable for either party.
Correct.
That's county or city.
Correct.
Due to material unforeseen changes in insurance coverage or payments, then either party shall have the right to terminate the agreement by giving at least six months' advance written notice to the other party. So there is an ability to cancel on either side for that reason.
Can the county sabotage that in a sense? I remember worrying about that when that first came to the table, as to whether or not that...
That's what we discussed, deliberately.
No, not really. The reason that we put that language in there, John, was that when, when, when you look at, when you look at the migration of, of insurance in this country, and you look at the recovery rates that we're getting, we base this on a formula where the, the city is getting about a 60% recovery rate. Now, if that tanked on that, say the recovery ramp went from 60 down to 40 on insurance, the reimbursement formula that's in this agreement no longer works. So we, we really put that in because the way the formula's constructed, there were a couple of different parts to it. What, what are the normal and reasonable reimbursement rates that are coming from insurance companies? And we agreed upon that. I mean, we got in the ballpark. And then what is the claims recovery experience being realized by the city? Now, that can move up or down, and the, and the formula moves up or down with it. And of course, the other piece is the number of calls, the number of EMS calls, and the number of fires. So, so, so that language was really put in to protect both parties from things that could occur, which we have no control. That's all.
So, obviously, we're catching up to speed here because, you know...
That's fine.
You know, a lot of this stuff, again, you know, there's an impression in the public for whatever reason. But first, I want to ask a legal question, Mr. Wilber. So, we've heard that the county's hands are tied in terms of what the, what the fire chiefs say. You know, but when they decide for territory, the county's hands are tied with that. You know, I mean, and that's, that's, I mean, does, you know, the fire, you know, you respect the fire chief, certainly, but is that an accurate statement? Can the fire chiefs, in your opinion, tie the county's hands in terms of fire district, in terms of the Salisbury Fire District, as outlined in the fire service agreement?
As outlined in the fire service agreement, it takes essentially five votes, the two councils, the two executives, mayor, and the Fire Chiefs Association.
Okay. Was that, you know, the fire chiefs had mentioned that they have access to the county attorney? Is it, I think that was, that's what you mentioned when you were up there. Is that, has there been communication about, I mean, was that, I mean, maybe that's, I'm not sure if, you know, you're relatively new. You know, is that, has there been communication about this? I mean, in terms of that, that sort, I mean, because we're hearing these statements in the press, and these aren't, these aren't media, you know, these are, you know, you can't blame, can't blame the media that was sitting here. These are statements from the executive, these are quotes. And so I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's going on here about where's this legal advice coming from that, that we, the county's bound by this decision?
What decision are you talking about?
The county's bound by the wording of the document.
I haven't followed, I haven't followed, I'm sorry.
The decision that was being talked about, that the fire chiefs made in terms of territory, I think that's what was being talked about, that...
When Bob says that he's... When Bob says that he's bound by the Fire Chiefs Association, is that legal? Is that your legal opinion? Is that correct, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to figure this out.
Okay, your, your question is directed at, uh, the Salisbury Fire District.
That, that's what's the question.
Since the signing of the agreement. Who has the ability to amend the Salisbury Fire District?
Yeah.
And the ability rests in five bodies. The two councils, the executive, the mayor, and the Fire Chiefs Association.
Does that spell it out in the fire service agreement? Because I don't remember seeing the five bodies, I just saw the three.
So the Chiefs Association is an agreement with change in it.
So it's vague, so it's vague.
It says city, county, Fire Chiefs Association. And city is defined as mayor and council, county is executive and council.
But I didn't see that defined in there.
But that's, but, but, so I guess my, you know, I'm confused, it's the impression that I got is to, there's, there's some miscommunication or something that the fire chiefs on this matter bound the county. You know, the hands are tied, that, that, that sounds like that the county has no say, that it's bound to do what the fire chiefs want. Is that, is that not true?
The fire chief decision does not tie the hands of the executive or the county council.
Why is the executive saying that, then?
He's saying it.
And, and, and Wayne, why is, you, you say that there's nothing gonna change except September fifteenth. The executive quoted saying, I'm not sure where it goes from here, we're all getting preliminary work done, I don't know what's gonna happen on September fifteenth.
When was this?
This was August twenty-eighth. You know, the, I'm confused, I think we're all confused, everybody here is probably as confused as I am. And part of the confusion is, is we have statements saying, you know, about the legal agreement, hands are tied, that we're not sure what's gonna happen September fifteenth. It's not, what's going on? I'm, I'm, I'm still trying to figure this out. What, you know, you, you, I read through the minutes of our meetings where we talked about this. You're consistent, what you said back then is what you say today. There's no, there's no change, you know, you're just like you're quoting from what you said in our minutes before. So, you know, and, and, and that's what we were going on, you know, I'm reading these, I'm like, I don't understand, so.
If I can, if I can.
Please.
The Chiefs Association would like to see the Station thirteen territory as described awarded to Station thirteen. The executive is supportive of that award. The executive understands, however, that he doesn't have unilateral authority to award that territory. That, that, that award has been rejected by the mayor and the city council. It's supported by the Fire Chiefs Association and by the county executive. But that's two to two already.
So why are we taking all this time putting this data in at the nine-one-one center, it still hasn't made sense?
I think there, I, I think there is, I think there is concern that if in fact that station does become a necessity, that the executive wanted to be able to, to react to that necessity quickly.
What would create that necessity?
A cancellation of the fire service agreement by the city.
They can't cancel it, no more than we can.
Uh, no, they can.
Either party can cancel it.
With six months' leave.
They're suing, they're threatening litigation to maintain that, that document, to keep that document in place. They're not throwing it away. They're gonna sue us to keep it where it is.
I understand that.
So I still don't...
The point I'm trying to make here tonight is that the executive, while he supports Station thirteen, while he agrees with the Chiefs Association's desire to award that portion of the Station One Territory to Station thirteen, understands that he doesn't have the unilateral authority to make that award.
Okay.
Here's another statement that's in another article, says Polador, who was here, said Station thirteen firefighters have a building on Snow Hill Road, raised X amount of dollars selling chicken dinners, and are planning to begin serving the community in mid-September. And that goes along with the letter that states they will start getting dispatched on September fifteenth.
Wayne, these guys visit me, they come and talk to me, they're planning on going in business. They are. They've been told. They've been told.
As Bob put a press release out that the, the Station thirteen volunteers will not be put into service on September fifteenth.
They could do it.
If we really wanted to eliminate the confusion.
What about the airport? That's like the only other question I have, because I thought we found the perfect solution. Station thirteen could be at the airport, you know, it would, the only thing I had to figure out was how mutual aid might work, something to that effect. What, what happened to the airport?
ARF, uh, ARF doesn't lend, and, 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 you know, originally, I thought that. Originally, I believe when I bought forward the 2018 budget, we had $300,000 in that budget. And one of the ideas that we had discussed was, well, maybe we kill two birds with one stone. You know, we've got forty-some, I mean, the shame of this is, and, and this was mentioned earlier, the shame of this is, is you have forty-five people who wanna provide a service to the public.
Yep.
Very valuable service, and they're not able to find a way to do it. I don't wanna go through the history of what happened with the Station One volunteers in the city. Uh, but, but it is at a point in time where you cannot, where it's very difficult to attract volunteers to fire an EMS service. It strikes me as a shame that we have forty-five people who wanna serve, and we can't find a way for them to serve.
Exactly.
So, you know, the thinking was, well, wait a minute, we do have a need at the airport, so maybe this is a way to really get these guys a home, if you will, to start that service. Uh, and as, as, and of course, didn't make it through the budget process, but I also then learned as we started having discussions with Piedmont Airlines and American Airlines about, um, extending the operational agreement that we have, and talked to them about how we were gonna cover ARF service. American and Piedmont are not, are, are not inclined to want ARF service covered on a volunteer basis. For, for reasons that, you know, they could explain, I, I don't wanna paraphrase.
So would we work out a relationship to hire some of these individuals to actually work out of the, the airport? Are you putting out RFPs to them? No, one time we talked about RFPs.
We've got a, we, we've got an RFP on the street right now. We're really at a stage, and I'll probably be coming to council. I was hoping that I could get to council, maybe on the nineteenth. Uh, we have been in discussions with American Airlines and with Piedmont. I have a fairly good idea of where I think, uh, American and Piedmont are gonna land in terms of the, uh, financial arrangements that they would like to see in place. And, um, if, if I can, if I can get that dialed in a little bit tighter, I'll probably send an endorsement over to council to request a work session before we really ink up a document. But as it stands right now, we believe that we can generate landing fees that would cover the probable cost of, of, of the ARF service at the airport. We have that RFP either on the street, John, or about to go out on the street. But we believe that landing fees will pretty well cover the cost of ARF. And there are companies out there that do it on a turnkey basis.
Like Wal-Mart.
Particularly at regi, particularly at regional airports.
Do us a favor, and in this agreement or in the lease or however it's gonna be, whatever document it's gonna be, please make sure that when you discuss the landing fees, the compensation for landing fees, the payments, however you wanna do it, do not make that restricted to fire service. I mean, I understand that they want to agree to, that we want them to pay landing fees, but just make sure the document states that they will agree to pay landing fees. I don't think the document needs to mention what that money is going to be for in particular, because that could create a problem.
It's gotta stay within the airport enterprise, that's how it requires that.
That's okay.
But you don't wanna tie it directly to ARF.
Exactly.
Okay. I'm saying okay.
Is that workable?
Yeah. It's a matter of negotiation, but...
Wayne, when's the last date that American Airlines and Piedmont's gonna stop providing that service?
Uh, end of November.
So, getting back to the fire service agreement or Station thirteen, um, what Mr. Foskey said today. Um, Mr. Pomador and Mr. Cooper visited me at the store one day, we spent a couple hours talking. And, you know, what I haven't seen, and I told them this, is I haven't seen an outpouring of support from the neighborhoods in the community for them. You know, he mentioned, somebody mentioned that, um, others, you know, there was some discontent with the neighborhood and others about it. Um, and I told them that day, I said, look, here's what you guys gotta do. You guys gotta get out and you gotta get support from the neighborhoods. And that's, that's the main thing I think they need to do. And that's not happened, from what I've seen. Um, and what I, I think what Mr. Foskey was referencing is I told them, I said, you know, if you guys are up and running, you know, when the next budget comes in, you know, if there was some way to change the fire agreement, you know, maybe we could fund you. I guess they took that as an insult. Um, but we don't, we, we're, they're not in the budget, so we didn't have any money to give them. So that we couldn't, we couldn't do anything anyway, so, um, but the trouble is, you know, is, you know, we don't have, you know, these folks, and it's great that we've got forty-five people that wanna serve, but we don't have forty-five people coming up here from the neighborhoods saying, we want, we want the, the fire company. We, we don't have that. You know, we've had one of the fellow's wives come up and spoke passionately about it, and, um, I think Mr. Foskey's mother came up, who she's only living in the county anymore. But we've not had forty-five people in here that are just from neighborhoods in that fire district that, that are begging for this service. They seem to be happy with what they got. And I think them being happy with what they've got is one of the reasons the fire service agreement's drawn up the way it was. If we had have known, or you had have known at the time, that there was discontent in those neighborhoods, you wouldn't have agreed to that fire service, nobody would have, the way it was. But the neighborhoods seemed to be happy with what service they were getting. So what, what goes on from here? What, what happens next with, with Station thirteen? Do, does, do we have more meetings and they come in and accuse us of not supporting them? Or, or is somebody out there telling them, okay, you guys just hang in there, you know, we're gonna get you on board here in another month or two? And that seems to be what's being said out there.
If, if you're asking me what, what I think a logical next step would be with regard to Station thirteen, I think, I think it was Mr. Polador and, and I think Barry also mentioned it. This, when, when you stand back and you look at this, and you take the money out of the equation, uh, the real discussion here has to do with public safety. And if in fact the addition of this station enhances public safety, then I think that that is the logical next discussion to have. Um, if, if, if the Station thirteen folks and the Chiefs Association, uh, would agree to it, I think that it would be helpful for them to have a work session and, and, and educate us, educate the county as to how public safety could be enhanced through the addition of an additional station. To me, that's the next logical step.
That should have been done six months ago.
I'm just simply saying, you're asking me where we should go from here.
Yeah, I understand.
And what I'm saying, and, and, and look, and I apologize, but you, you spend a lot of time, I mean, I've spent, I spent two years of Rick's administration, I spent a good year and a half of this administration trying to find a way to put together a fire service agreement that would get us past being at loggerheads constantly with the city. And, you know, when, when you, when you feel that you've accomplished that, um, you, you, you get a little, you got a little angry, you know, earlier in the meeting, I got a little bit angry, when you spend that amount of time and you put in that kind of effort, and you feel that collectively, um, the community has done a good job of solving a problem, and then an email that you've sent gets parsed, you know, that's a little disheartening, guys. And if I, and if I lost my temper, I apologize for losing my temper.
Come home and read that email tonight and just say, well, what did that say?
You know, no, no, I read that email before.
He wrote it.
I wrote it, I wrote it, and I read it several times before I hit send, and I'm pretty sure that my counterpart understood exactly what I was saying. So, you know, I think it's not helpful to get into a rhubarb, and I participated in it, and I apologize, over parsing words in an email when we're talking about something as important as public safety and fire service in the county. And I guess that's why I got a little bit agitated.
Well, Wayne, we get these, we're always getting these mixed messages, you know? I mean, we're, we're...
Let's get away from the email, okay? Maybe, maybe all six of us or seven of us misinterpreted that email, I, I don't know. Did you all interpret it the way I did?
Mark, do you have a question?
I did, well, I'll, I'll, I'll let Joe finish his thought.
Yeah, but, um, I guess the biggest question we have now is where do we go from here? You were getting there with, you were getting there, you got off track.
I really...
You were that close.
You were that close.
Yeah, you know, can we talk about the general, no.
And I think we do have a good fire service agreement. I think it's a good fire service agreement.
But, but what I say, I think, I think that the next logical step, where do we go from here? I think, again, you have forty-five people who wanna serve this county.
Right.
They have reasons for wanting to serve the county. They believe that they're, that, that by serving, they can enhance public safety. Isn't it worthwhile sitting down and hearing how they believe they can enhance public safety? And whether or not we should consider some further discussion with the city about an amendment to the agreement that would work for the city and the county? It all boils to, take the money out of it. Take the money out of it. We have an opportunity to enhance public safety. Should we take that opportunity and explore it further?
I think, I think the, I think the conversation with the city ought, I mean, I think everybody out here understands the public safety issue. You know, I mean, I, I do, I'm pretty sure everybody else does. I think the conversation with the city ought to come next and get, try to, if you're gonna get an amendment.
There's never been any proof that the service was unsatisfactory to begin with in that district. There never has been any proof.
What, Mark? So, um, is there, are there any plans to have, um, Station thirteen as kind of a reserve station to be called out, you know, if, um...
Not right now.
Okay.
Not right now, because I'm not, and I don't know if you guys are aware of...
That's never happened.
...where we are on mutual aid, second call, that type of thing?
There, there's, there's a proposal.
There's a proposal now.
Well, and who, whose proposal would that be?
I am prepared to call a special meeting of the Wycomico County Fire Chiefs Association to discuss this issue. The, the thing, you know, the thing I did is...
Joe, could you use that mic for a second?
Certainly.
Yeah, thanks.
Come up here, Joe.
Or, yeah, you sit.
Are you in the phone?
I hate this.
The thing of it is, and you, and I know this is a closed session, I appreciate you guys...
It's open.
Yeah, you're on TV.
There's only about a hundred thousand people.
They'll be talking about me tomorrow. Um, I know, and I don't get paid for it. Here's, here's the issue, okay? Starting from, from day one, we have tried to mitigate this problem because it was dropped in our land, okay? The, the city administration of SFD should have took care of this problem. And you've got a volunteer fire station that was under the umbrella of the city of Salisbury for whatever irreconcilable differences pulled out from the city of Salisbury, okay? They're still a fire station, they have been since day one. You know, I've been in contact with Maryland... You know, I've been in contact with Maryland, that all this stuff that's been on the TV, disinformation and everything else, nothing has changed. We changed their number for dispatch reasons only. We have tried to mitigate this, and the mayor, because Chief Hoppus said, right in our meeting, he, he's welcome to come, that immediate we've got, he said, whatever the mayor decides is what we're going with. We have tried to get him to sit down and talk with us. We have tried to get information. Nobody here has gone rogue or tried to be a rebel. We are trying to do the same thing you guys are sitting up here trying to do, to mitigate this issue, come to a close, so we can continue to do what we've done for you for the last forty years.
Let me ask you a question, Joe, because I've received an email that said that the Wycomico County Emergency Services Policy Procedure and Guideline Manual for Emergency Communications says that a request to change, modify, or adjust must be submitted by the chief whose area is to be affected. So wouldn't that be that Chief Hoppus would have to make that request?
Yes, but he gave up him making the request to the mayor.
But I mean, but even then, he would have, over and above fire service agreements and everything else, and your policy and guidelines, in order for this to even move forward, Chief Hoppus would have to give his okay.
Yes, and he, and he has, he has come to us for things in the past, and we've worked things out.
Okay.
The issue is, this whole thing, and I said it when I talked to you before, the fire service agreement between the city and the county, and the problem with Station 1, which is a city station on Beaglin Park Drive, there is no volunteer agency in that station anymore. The volunteers are coming from 2 and 60, and the career staff. We don't have any issue with any of, you know, career people or anything else. But they, they pulled, you know, that, that volunteer fire company pulled out. So, so we're, we're trying to mitigate this and come to a determination without, the, the mayor has refused to sit down and talk to us, like I'm sitting here talking to you guys now. He's refused to come and answer our questions.
We let people talk.
Well, 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 it seems part of the problem too, you know, so, so you have this issue where you have this station that's recognized by you, the Wycomico County Association, the state, and, and all that. But due to the fire service agreement, they don't have any territory, and due to the budget as presented to us, they don't have any funding, which is kind of unprecedented in the county. You know, I mean, every, you know, Allen, Sharp Town, Westside, they have territory and they have funding. This station has no territory and no funding because of stuff presented to us. So, you, I mean, yeah, how do you, how do you deal with that?
I understand that, because no, no, nobody, nobody, I mean, we've been, said we're irrelevant, but nobody, you know, we're trying to give our input, but nobody will come to the table to, to come to this. I mean, to come to some kind of logical decision and, and to work together to sit down to mitigate this problem. There's a hundred thousand other things we need to take care of for you guys. I, I, I mean, and we have done it. And it's, you know, there's, there's a lot of questions in the county of, of what are we doing? Well, I kind of took that as a compliment, because, okay, there's a lot of questions in the county of why the Fire Chiefs Association are, is doing what they're doing. Well, we've done it. We've done it for years. We, we've mitigated these issues and took care of these issues, so you all didn't have to deal with it. Or, or the city council for that matter, because the dispatching and everything is all, you know, our advisory board takes care of talking to Dave Shipman and 911 Center. We've worked everything out.
Thing is, Josie, this has gone to a whole new level. A lot of things of what you guys have been discussing and reviewing the whole time have been fire stations that are servicing designated towns or municipalities. This is completely different. We're taking an entity trying to create something.
Well, let me.
No different, not, not saying you can't handle it, but it's a whole different, you know, there are a lot, we're players now.
We're creating something out of something that was already established. The volunteer, like I said, under the umbrella of Salisbury.
Right.
You've got, you had sixteen, two, and one.
Right.
The city set that up that way. You didn't do it, I didn't do it, council didn't do it. They, they set it up that way. So when their station, their volunteer organization decided to pull out their own volunteer.
When I say that, what I mean is that the genesis of all fire stations has come from the need of a municipality or the need of a town.
And they were already servicing that territory.
Right.
The entire territory. Now, like I, I talked, talked to my Maryland side mayor tonight, and I tried to bring her up to speed, because she had a lot of questions. But, you know, what we were told, and we got a list of stipulations from the mayor in an email of, of him agreeing that they ran outside of the bypass. Now, when this was brought to the meeting, Lee Smith, Deputy Chief, he, he moved his evaluation from Station 1 to Station 16, when Station 1 pulled out, okay? And Bob got into an argument in the middle of the meeting, Shoreburg Stadium, and he was running the. So if it wasn't discussed, why are we arguing something that wasn't discussed?
We, we never said it wasn't discussed.
I'm not saying, you said it wasn't.
No, I, no, no, no one's saying it wasn't, I mean.
But.
The, the matter of whether it was discussed or not, sure, sure it was discussed, but the, what was signed was completely different than what was discussed.
What, and, and what I'm saying, that territory was originally assigned to Company Number 1, under the auspices of the City of Salisbury.
Correct.
Okay?
Which, which territory? The territory outside the bypass?
The entire territory.
Entire.
Okay, okay.
Now, you've got, you've got city territory.
Yeah.
And you've got county territory, okay? All we're talking about here is county territory. It's, it's county, it's county, there's nothing there that binds by the city. And of course, you know, when, when it was brought to us, it's, well, you know, the Beaglin Park Drive station where the city is right across the street from Parkside, of course you're not going to do that. We're all logical thinking, public servants that are here for public safety. But then it was proposed to us, the bypass and everything outside the bypass. But, you know, and, and I think to, to, in that divides Company Number 1's territory, the original territory right in half. But these were the same guys doing it in January, that now they're not good enough to do it. And, and I understand that the rivalry between career and volunteers, I mean, you know, there, there's a little bit of rivalry there, but it's not a deep seated hatred. And I do not want that to happen in Wycomico County, and it's starting to happen.
Well, I, I guess part of the problem is that, it was discussed, and I believe you that it was, but in the fire service agreement that it was assigned, I mean, you heard here that there was no division of territory, and that's, that binds the county and the city. And so, you know, I guess, you know, trying to figure, you know, that kind of supersedes any, any previous thing that went on. So I'm just trying to, you know, I'm, I'm as confused as anybody here, just trying to figure it out.
I have, I have an email from Jake Day that was handed to me by my Vice President. This is to Mr. Weston. Thanks for sharing the draft letter this morning. Here's an additional details of what we discussed. I think this is about it. One, introductory language about this is what the executive and the mayor agreed to in seeking the agreement of the Radio Committee Chiefs Association. Territory reference map, follows the bounds of the municipal boundary. When such areas exist outside of the discredited area, I love the way they write this stuff, keeps all the territory west of Hobbs Road from Route 50 to the bypass, and then follows the inside of the bypass. This conforms with the map that we drew. We drew the Sunday Bob, Wayne, Joey and I met, and the map scanned on the day of the press conference. Three, this is new and hasn't been discussed about, but is a concern that has come up several times. City Rescue Squad, they'll be the first dispatch to all MBCs on the bypass along with the new station until they have, until they have stood up a rescue unit, not a deal breaker for me, but is worth considering until they have this capacity. So, and I mean, four, no new station, substation inside the city fire district for the new station. Their footprint needs to be in their territory. However, stopping right there, what's Station 2 going to do? We're looking at this, at a forward thinking thing, okay? The city will keep Station 1. No renumbering of capital equipment, buildings, et cetera. The new station may be numbered however they prefer. The new station will not use the phrase Salisbury Fire Company or Salisbury Fire Department. That's in their charter. That's legal. I don't have anything to do with that.
Yeah, but Joe, these are all thoughts in process. This wasn't what was finally decided upon.
Wait, wait, John, John, the, the, is, is that, is that April, it's the end of April, isn't that, that the email?
April 25th, 2017.
And the fire service agreement was signed on April 4th or 5th?
Yes, this is after.
It's after, so, you know, so that's talking about a possible, you know, if we're going to amend it, this would be what the, he's possibly doing, but that.
And that's, and that's what we're saying. I mean, even after this was agreed to, we had this presented to us.
Yeah, but.
So we're rolling along with this, and now.
But somehow they fell apart, so it's, it's inconsequential at this stage, because whatever the discussions were, whatever the plans were, they fell apart.
Well, they fell apart due to lack of cooperation of the City of Salisbury.
We came up here about this possible support company, we asked you to come up to the table and talk about, and you said that was being discussed?
It will be discussed, and they are willing to, I've got to call a special meeting, and they are willing to run mutual aid, you know, to everybody. But here, here's the other thing. Chief Hoppus sent an email to the EOC saying that he wasn't going to accept any mutual aid from this Company 13. Okay, that's in the county. Now, you're getting ready to pay him, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Nine fifty.
Nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for covering county territory. The surrounding stations have never told the City of Salisbury, we would not come in and help them at any given point in time, and we're doing it on a daily basis. Well, you know, so, these are things that can be worked out, and they can be done. But we need a direction too. And, you know, the direction that we were going with was September the 15th, that Station 13 was going to come online.
Apparently that was never going to happen, though. That, that's the word we got here tonight. That wasn't going to happen.
Well, that's what I heard.
Well, let me, let me.
Did someone tell you that?
Uh, that's what we've had at chief's meeting.
That you've been told that it was going to happen?
Uh, yes.
By who?
Well, who comes to the chief's meeting?
Well, you tell me.
The county executive.
Okay. You know, that's what I was getting ready to ask you. We don't have any funding, we don't have any area, we don't have a firehouse for the fellows. They're being told that they're going to go in business on the 15th of September. You just said that. And I guess my question was, who keeps making these promises?
Well, they have a station. They're getting, they're having their two engines inspected, and John Bartow contacted me for mems to inspect their ambulance, because our committee chairman, who oversees the ambulance stuff for the county, ALS and BLS, was here, but he elected not to speak to me, because in order for their ambulance to come online, we have to say, yes, this is what.
So the Chiefs Association has been told by the county executive that they're going to go into operation on the 15th?
The impression we had was the 15th was the deadline, and we were, there was a deadline sooner. There were some questions that came up as we were progressing. I said, September 15th, we're, we're not going to keep content, because we've got things we've got to do.
I have to, a couple more questions. We do want to wrap this up.
So, so is all this stuff you're hearing here tonight, was that new to you? I mean, it's new to me. Was this stuff being told, I mean, about the legal issue and?
Well, the legal issue is, is the county Fireman's Association looks at it, is Jake Day has decided he's not going to distribute the 508 money like he's supposed to.
For the benefit of everybody, what's the 508 money and how come he can't distribute, how come he gets to distribute it and not?
Can I let my Vice President answer that question?
General, we do need to.
Sorry, John, sorry.
We need to hear this. I mean, we're on TV, so people out there in TV land will know what we're talking about.
Marty Scarsen. 508 money is the AMOS funds that are provided by the state of Maryland to the municipalities, to the counties. It's pass through money. So it's given to the county, and the county holds on to it till it's released, is able to be released to the fire companies as long as everybody makes, meets all the criteria. Okay, as of this point in time, Salisbury doesn't, hasn't completed everything that they're supposed to complete in order to, to provide the money to the companies. And there's a question on how much money that's going to be, because the city has deemed that they want a larger share of it, from what I understand.
You said it's released to the county.
It's, the state gives it to the county, the county has it, is, holds it until they can release it to the fire companies.
Okay, so why, when you're saying Jake won't, the mayor won't give it to, to the fire companies, but you're saying the county's what's got it?
Right, but they can't give it out until all the entities meet the criteria in order to disseminate it. And it can only be given out all at one time.
Okay.
And all the, all the, the, everybody who receives, all the recipients have to meet the, the criteria.
Okay, Wayne, do you want to?
It's, it's, it's federal funding that passes through the state to the county. The, the municipalities have typically waived receiving any share of the AMOS funds. The AMOS funds have typically been divided up amongst the fourteen, fourteen companies on an equal basis. This year, there, there is an issue with the city not agreeing to that formula. I know that I asked Dawn Parks to speak with Paul. Our working, our working solution on that is to really take that portion that would go to the city volunteer companies, sequester it, and distribute the rest of the money to the volunteer companies in the county.
It's actually not the mayor holding it up. I mean, he's holding up the process, he's not holding up the money. He's not getting, he doesn't give the money out to the outline areas.
It's a pass through from the federal government. So I, I think we've, I think we've got a.
If I could, I have to wrap.
Let me, let me, let me clarify that. You've got several fire companies that are not in municipalities.
Yes.
Okay, so there's, there's no way they can sign off on that money to be distributed because they don't have a municipality to sign off on.
Right.
And we were told that the mayor was not going to sign on, on his portion for the municipality of the City of Salisbury, which holds everybody up.
We threw protocol out the window about an hour ago. I'm going to let you speak very quick. I'm going to leave you about one minute, and there's no rebuttals, no nothing, because we're wrapping this up, okay? But I have to, I want to give you that time.
Thank you, President. Try to simplify things a little bit from my standpoint. My name's Aaron, Aaron Colgrove, President of Salisbury Career Firefighters Association. I respect all the, the whole concept of the volunteers moving, starting a new station, so on and so forth. However, their building's on Snow Hill Road that they're going to be running out of apparently. In order to go to the territory that you're talking about them taking, or they're taking over, I should say, we already cover that 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. You can't get any better coverage than a staffed firehouse 24 hours a day. So now they're going to drive from Snow Hill Road if they're there. If they're not, they're not going to respond, so we're still going to respond anyways. Now you're talking about spending, what, four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars is the estimate for a new company? We run 130 calls in that new territory that they're talking about trying to take over outside the bypass. Last year, we ran 133, I think is what it was. Year averaging $3,138.46 per call. That's crazy. Right now, we cover, the City of Salisbury covers, or Salisbury Fire Department, our jurisdiction, we cover about 5,200 calls in the county. If you're If you're giving us nine hundred and fifty thousand per that agreement, you're averaging a hundred and, hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents per call. To me, this is, this is obvious. I don't understand. There's ten other companies in this county. Why are we bringing a new one in to cover a small area at a price tag that high when it's already being covered twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, with guaranteed coverage?
All right.
So, thank you.
Thank you for keeping it brief. Um, gentlemen, I appreciate you, Joe. Thank you very much, Marty. Appreciate your time. Wayne, um, that'll close this work session. And any, any new information, let us know, okay?
Thank you, guys.
As things develop, we'd appreciate it.
Wayne, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Just quick, just to confirm something.
Stay as long as you want.
I've been told numerous times that there's two employees that the county is paying for as firefighters at the airport. Is this true?
Run that by me again.
I've been told numerous times why people in the fire service at the county is employing two people as firefighters at the airport. Is that true?
I think we have two people, uh, from, uh, from Wallops Island who do live in the county, who are providing backup for our...
So we're paying them? We're paying them?
Yes. And the reason for that, Larry, was because...
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The reason for that is, is as the, as the Piedmont mechanics got rotated out to, to other airports, other assignments, we were running short on the number of respondents that we needed to cover all the shifts. So I believe we do have two people who are fire-trained at Wallops, live in the county.
I've heard that, but it didn't come from you all. So we, we, as a council, I guess, didn't know there were employees at the airport.
We just covered off on it, you know, out of the airport budget.
Because I, I didn't believe them, so I'm...
It used to be covered by the mechanics.
You can, you can stay with the closed session. Entertained a motion adjourned so we can go to, uh, wait a minute, are we going to...
You have the local preference work session?
Oh, we're doing the local preference, okay.
Well, yeah, I don't, I, have you seen the memo? I didn't see the memo.
Can we move this to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Can we move, Bob, I want to give you, I want to give you a respectful amount of time, and nobody's going to be doing that this time.
Yeah, no problem. I think Paul and I are in agreement on it.
Thank you. Okay. Are we, all right, so, entertaining a motion...
The, the, the two bodies can't get along. We need to, we're in agreement.
So we're going to entertain a motion here to adjourn so that we can go into closed session. Hang on one second here, please. Let me, um...
Potential litigation. Closed session, potential litigation.
Okay, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn so we can reconvene as the Urban Services Commission.
So move.
Second, all those favor?
Aye.
Means adjourned. Uh, we're now, uh, sitting as the Urban Services Commission, entertain a motion to go into closed session. Understand? Second? Okay, we're now in closed session.